Welcome to Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 7th, 2015. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could ask Brad Tanner, if you'll lead us in that.
Yeah. Read after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight will be the approval of the minutes from our December 3rd, 2014 meeting. I think everyone that's here was present at that. The basic items was some zone change on some hillside development regulations that got continued to tonight that will look likely get continued again. The Stillman zone change, the preliminary plat for Maple Mountain Estates and for Canyon Vista Estates, and then some other business, some kind of preliminary discussions about the Parkview Townhomes. I think those were the items there. Has anybody, everybody had a chance to read the minutes and any corrections or comments?
I was actually absent, Bruce, but I went ahead and reviewed them, but I'll let you guys verify them.
I'll entertain a motion, then.
I'll make a motion that we approve the December 3rd minutes from our Planning Commission meeting.
Do I have a second? A motion, sorry, a motion by Commissioner Tag.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Wilkinson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the hillside development standards. Mr. Anderson, you want to give us a little introduction there and let us know where we're headed?
We talked just briefly about that in your meeting in December, and had anticipated having an updated version of what we shared with you in December. Really with the idea that tonight we'd have a public hearing and ask you guys to make a recommendation on that. Maybe I can blame this a little bit on the holidays and schedules not lining up the way we wanted them to. But one of the things that we've wanted to do, and I think it's at least started to happen, is have some additional correspondence between city staff and some engineering experts that we use to help us make sure that things are being constructed the way that they should be in certain critical environments, in this case, it's a firm that we contract with on geotechnical kinds of issues. As I understand it, they've looked at the draft that we presented to you guys last month. Some changes have been made, but we're not quite ready yet to present that to you for your consideration. So we'd ask tonight simply that you continue that. It's our expectation certainly that within the next few weeks, we'll be sending a copy back to you guys, so you'd have some time to look it over before we have a rescheduled public hearing on that in your February meeting.
Okay, great. Any questions for Dan? Do we need to make a formal motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So if somebody could just move to continue that to some future meeting, I'd agree.
I'll make a motion that we push this out till the rest of the information comes in, hopefully at our next planning meeting.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tanner. We have a second.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Tag. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next item, Title 15 text amendment.
I'd like to just take a minute or two to talk through these changes. You can see there's really not a lot to them in terms of the scale of the text that we're talking about here. Title 15 is the city's zoning ordinance, which happens to be a chapter in our municipal code, but we refer to it by a few different titles, zoning code, zoning ordinance, Title 15. And in order to amend Title 15, municipalities in Utah are required to hold public hearings with both the Planning Commission and the City Council. So tonight, we'll talk about the changes, to whatever extent you'd like to. If you feel like we're ready, we've advertised for a public hearing tonight to hold that. Then again, if you choose, you can close that public hearing and discuss it more if you'd like, and if you feel like we're ready to move forward, if you're ready to take action on it, you can make a recommendation to either approve or deny the proposed changes or to have them modified. You really have a lot of, a lot of different options relative to action that you take tonight. As is often the case, we've worked on these a little bit as staff, so it's our hope that we can get comfortable recommending that they be approved tonight. But with that said, let's maybe kind of talk it through a little bit and just kind of go from there.
David, is these just, so these are just pieces of Title 15, right? That something's triggered a request for a change?
Exactly, yeah. In fact...
How often does this happen in a year? Does it happen multiple times whenever you want to change?
Customarily, yes. And that's certainly worth talking about, and just by way of a visual aid. This is, this is my hard copy of Title 15 that I keep and use. So just like you mentioned, what we're seeing here are just some excerpts. Typically, we try to provide a little bit of text before and after the actual changes and what we deliver to you usually is done in some type of a red text and strikeout fashion with proposed changes, where if there's something that we're proposing to have eliminated, we'll have that in red in some kind of memorandum like this with the deletions, proposed deletions struck out. With proposed additions, we just typically just leave it in red text like we have here. I think everything that we're talking about now are proposed additions, additional language to the code. But again, it's not a real lengthy document, not like what you'd see in some communities, but about 100 pages of rules that define development regulations and what our zoning laws are in the city. And we do, we make changes routinely over the course of any given year. This, you know, really like many laws in this country, they are living, they evolve and change. In Spanish Fork, oftentimes, changes are initiated by the city, whether it be the city staff. We've done changes in the past that have been initiated by the Planning Commission or the City Council, but as well oftentimes, changes are initiated by the public, whether it be a developer or just a resident. We have a formal application process that people can go through to start the procedure on modifying our zoning laws. And again, it's pretty customary for us to talk about different adjustments, which frankly is something that I appreciate. I think that we're always looking to make our laws as reasonable and as effective as they can be, and oftentimes that necessitates change.
Yeah, okay.
With that said, let's talk about flagpoles for just a second. We don't want to regulate everything, but we have an issue that's come up that makes it necessary for us, we think, to simply define what a flagpole is. So simply put, if a staff or a pole meets the little bit of criteria that we're suggesting we adopt as a definition there, then we call it a flagpole. This would be something like that as opposed to, you know, maybe some other column or something substantially larger that somebody for whatever reason might want us to consider to be a flagpole, where we think that really doesn't, you know, meet the intent, even just by way of Webster's dictionary and what you'd read there as being defined as a flagpole. We don't necessarily like to get into details like this, but occasionally, we think it's useful and I'll even ask personally tonight that you guys consider making a recommendation that we adopt that definition or something similar to it to clarify what a flagpole is.
Is the 24-inch diameter that's in the pole, what's the magic there?
We take the, well...
I know we have a huge flagpole down at the fairgrounds and we, you know, there's another one up at Macy's, so those are pretty big.
So we've measured those two, and they're both smaller than 24 inches, 18 to 20 inches. So we have used those as the guide.
The purpose is, from this amendment, it looks like is to prevent flagpoles from being larger than 24 inches, is that right?
Conceivably, that would happen with this, yeah.
What about height? Would there ever be a reason you'd want to limit the height on a flagpole?
We already do.
Oh, so that's already listed?
That's identified in a chart that we have in the zoning code that simply says, "Flagpoles can be as tall as any buildings in a particular zoning district." So in a lot of our zoning districts, our maximum height for buildings is 35 feet. In that case, you can have a flagpole that's 35 feet tall. In some other zoning districts...
Whatever the height of the building is.
...taller. And we have one zoning district, our industrial zoning district, where the maximum allowable height is considerable, excuse me, considerably higher than that even, and that's really what we're looking to, to address with this here, just to make sure we don't end up with a situation where there's an argument about what a flagpole is or isn't. I admit, this, it may be as bizarre as it sounds, but...
So it's, in here, it's a definition, but the details, like Brad was asking, and the height is in different areas.
We do, we do further define what the height can be.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, I think that's all I have on that one. We spoke last month a little bit about the infill overlay zone, which is kind of the unique zoning tool that we have that I think we've used effectively in a few different cases at least. And in fact, we had an applicant here who's worked on a project a little bit, and we talked about the idea of maybe making the adjustments that I'll talk about in just a second to our infill overlay zone. So specifically could be utilized on two projects that we're reviewing right now. One would be located across the street from the sports park on Volunteer Drive. The other one would be located, I guess, on kind of the north end of the city, just east of Wendy's, just north of a trailer court that's over there, where in those cases, the applicants would like to construct townhome buildings that have six units in them. Right now, our infill overlay zone limits building size to four units per structure. And with that in mind, we've tried to propose this adjustment with the idea that in many cases, we think four units is a reasonable limit to have in place. I think originally, the infill overlay zone was conceived to provide some redevelopment options for the part of the city that I think most closely surrounds where we are here, the originally platted parts of the city where much development occurred decades ago, and of course has continued over the years, where over time, the city in many cases has allowed for buildings of as many as four units to be built. But in that setting, where we're dealing with properties typically that are a half of an acre to maybe as large as an acre in size, I think, and I'll just speak for myself for a minute, I can't think of very many situations where I feel like a six-plex, a six-unit townhome building really would be fitting with those neighborhoods, where yes, we have a mix of different building types, single-family homes, duplexes, like I said, some fourplexes and things like that, but we really don't have much that's any bigger than that. So we've tried to limit the likelihood that anybody would propose such a project in this part of the city, where again, the parcel sizes are really quite small, by saying that you conceivably could use buildings that have six units in a development, provided that the project size is at least 2.5 acres. So with that, we...
So currently, the townhomes can only be four per building?
Correct.
And what if it's a huge, I know there's several places in town where there's a lot of acreage and there's a lot of townhomes, are they currently as well the same rules, four?
They, those have not typically been approved as infill overlay projects.
So that's an infill is a different description of parcel size?
Infill, as we use that phrase, I know we get too hung up on semantics, maybe even just talk differently. We have some pretty rigid zoning rules. For example, in the area that surrounds us where properties are zoned R1-6, that means if you have 6,000 square feet, you can build a single-family home on a property, but if you don't have 6,000 square feet, or if you don't have 50 feet of frontage and meet some other criteria, you don't qualify. We can't issue a building permit. Also, in that particular zoning district, the R1-6 zoning district, we only allow people to build single-family homes under the strict provisions of our zoning rules. It doesn't matter if your lot's 6,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet. And with that in mind, we realize that because properties are so different, you know, over time, things really have evolved block by block in very different ways. And I think particularly with the evolution of some of our land use patterns, we have a lot of deep lots where there's frankly a lot of unused land, mostly in the older parts of the city, yeah. So as we looked at that and looked at the rigid zoning rules that we had, we tried to come up with a mechanism that would allow people a certain amount of flexibility to be able to make use maybe of properties where there's some extra land. Maybe it's a redevelopment thing where somebody is ready to tear down a home and build something entirely new. And as we started looking at our situation here and how some other cities have handled things, then we really found a couple of examples that we felt were fitting in Provo and Orem, where they've adopted different zoning programs that basically give a developer an opportunity to propose something. And likewise, it gives the city the opportunity to say thumbs up or thumbs down with considerable flexibility that's very distinct from just following her zoning rules, you know, as they're written in black and white. And we happen to call that program here our infill overlay zone. So that's, it's just a title that we thought was fitting, and we assigned that to the text of that zoning district. So that's what I'm talking about now, is changing some of the rules that we have in that zoning description for the infill overlay. And in this case, with respect to both the number of units in the building and the setback requirement that I'll touch on in just a second, we're suggesting that we change the rules to make them a little bit more flexible.
David, here, you mentioned it, it shows R3 zone only. Is that the only zone that the infill overlay zone is, can occur within?
It's a great question, no. It can occur in the R1-6 and the R3 both, by definition.
Jared, can you turn on the zones, just so we can, I'd just be curious to know kind of where are the R3 zones, be reminded of that?
It's going to be a minute.
Yeah, it's all right.
While we're pulling that up, you can see the other change talks about setbacks. When we wrote the provisions for the infill overlay zone, we talked a lot about setbacks. And five or six years ago when we adopted that, we were pretty concerned about making sure that the front setback that a project had matched what was existing, which in most cases, in the parts of the city that we'll look at here, again, area that surrounds us, we have a 25-foot front setback, and we felt like we really wanted to stick to that to provide for some continuity with development that surrounds a particular proposal maybe. Now that we're looking at some other areas a little bit more closely and some different architectural styles, we think there may be value in considering something less than 25 feet, and that's, we've tried to write the language there on the setback, to not necessarily make it an automatic that somebody could have less than 25 feet as a front setback, but you know, kind of back to the idea that we'll allow somebody to propose whatever they're, they'd like, and we as staff use the Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council can review and decide if it makes sense or not. That's what we've tried to do with that language as well. The orange color, you see here, that's where most of our R1-6 zoning is, so we've got a few other areas. In other parts of the community, this brown here, that's our R3 zoning, which we really don't have much of throughout the city. The majority of it, though, like the R1-6, really does lie with the originally platted parts of the city that I keep referring to. So that's really what we're talking about.
So your concern, what I kind of sensed was some of this older parts of the town, city where you might have a narrow but real deep property, now they can only do four. If we allow up to six, it may look out of place...
Exactly.
...for the area. And so, has someone approached the city with a request for this? Is this why it's, the city's not necessarily recommended this? Maybe a developer has, and that's why it's on the docket for a decision?
You know, we had another change, it's the last one that we have here in the works by way of a revision to Title 15. We've been working with the two projects that I mentioned earlier, so even though the developers in those cases haven't formally been the ones to make application, Dean's here tonight, I know, talking about one of the two projects, if you'd like him to. The city has initiated this change, but it's really come about to try to accommodate what these developers are trying to do. We just kind of piggybacked it on, on another change that we have. I guess, have any questions or concerns about that, want to talk about now at least?
Well, I concur with you that a narrow and deep piece of property that would have enough room there to do a six-unit building could look out of place in old parts of the city, where right now, it's big enough to do that six, but they only allow four, which looks more natural. Looks plenty big, probably for the neighborhood anyway, at a four. So with just that regard of the older part of the city, I kind of like the idea of staying with four. But I guess just...
So the language, though, is limited to the R3 zone to allow a townhome, so the R1-6 zone will not change, it'll still only allow a fourplex?
That's correct. That is correct. And furthermore, with that minimum project size at 2.5 acres...
Yes.
...I really can't think of many properties, maybe the old Reese Elementary School, for example...
Okay.
...that might be two and a half acres in size, but other than that, we just don't have many in that area. So that's intended...
I wasn't thinking about that 2.5. That does give it more footprint to look better.
Well, exactly. And further, really the intent there, we're not trying to be under...
It's to limit, right?
It's to limit it, yeah. It's really to limit its application in that part of the city. Now, honestly, I feel very different about the need to limit the number of units in a building. For example, on the property that's just north of Volunteer Drive, where it's in close proximity to a townhome project that has six units per building, you know, the setting's just so much different than it is here and there, as would be in other places where infill overlay might be fitting. You typically, I think, see a project that's bigger than two and a half acres, so that's one way to try to, I guess, satisfy a couple of different interests that we think both have value. So we started these changes as kind of a correction. If you guys have really good memories, those of you that were on the commission last spring, remember, we brought several pages of updates to Title 15. We're always making changes, but every...
Two or three years, it seems like, we'll go through and do quite a few en masse.
And one of the changes that we talked about at that point in time had to do with screening outdoor storage areas in our industrial part of the city. Right now, we require that outdoor storage areas be screened with a masonry wall, and we have that requirement for a number of different reasons, aesthetic reasons, safety concerns, protecting property and different things like that. But we've looked at a couple of different properties where, for example, they abut a railroad track, or they back right up against I-15. And in our view, we really haven't seen a lot of value in requiring a masonry wall to be constructed adjacent, for example, to a railroad right-of-way, or again, to I-15. So actually, back in the spring, we talked about making the change that's spelled out there in red, with that exception, to where outdoor storage areas that abut US Highway 6, a railroad, or Interstate 15, on that part of their property line would not be required to install a masonry wall. And that got discussed with the Planning Commission, got discussed with the City Council, but somehow was not included in the ordinance that the City Council took action on. So we hope tonight that you'll consider making a recommendation on that. Just, it seems reasonable to us that we're still accomplishing the goal of creating an aesthetically functional and safe arrangement without requiring the wall next to those kind of facilities.
The railing one, for me, makes sense. With the highway one, I mean, there are times where, majority of the time, the highway is elevated, and so a six-foot fence doesn't make sense, so I understand that side. Are there conditions in the city where grade of the freeway and the grade of the adjacent properties are close enough that a six-foot masonry fence would provide that? I mean, I don't, is there, is there a way of saying that this applies if the grade differential is four feet or greater, or six feet? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit in our DRC meeting even today. After that discussion, I gave that quite a bit more thought, both by way of Interstate 15 and Highway 6. And along I-15, when it comes to properties that are zoned industrial, we really don't have much that's close to being at grade. We really don't. And frankly, I think with much of the property that abuts I-15 along that corridor, when it is zoned industrial, I think it's pretty unlikely that we'll see outdoor storage, you know, right up to that right-of-way. I have a couple of cases where it's already happened, but that's particularly where we have the really high, or the very significant grade differential. We get a little bit closer to that in a couple of cases along US 6, but we really don't have much industrial zoning adjacent to it until we get up to, for example, the gravel pits and some things like that, where the wind farm is. So I've had the same thought, and I can't think of a situation where that likely is going to create a big problem.
Do the outdoor storage areas include both? Because I can see from some of that verbiage, it looks like that it's just open storage where you can stack, or would it be covered or enclosed storage, storage units? So it would include both of those situations?
Nope. It'd be, this is intended to address things like a boneyard.
Okay. So it's not like commercial storage units?
Exactly. Yep. Nothing is enclosed in a building, certainly.
Is there a definition of outdoor storage in Title 15?
I think we did define it.
It's defined as an area that is designated on a site plan for the storage of raw materials, finished products, vehicles, trailers...
It's all open, then?
...or other equipment, yeah, used in connection with a business that's located on the same site. So anything within a building wouldn't qualify, wouldn't bring that requirement into play. So that's my description of the changes. The Development Review Committee's talked about these on a few occasions, and just earlier today, made a recommendation that they be approved. So that's where staff is. Like I mentioned, we have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. You don't have to take action tonight, but I think that's all that I have.
Anybody have any concerns about taking actions tonight? There isn't that too, so... We'll go ahead, and this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. Do I have to make a, do we have to make a motion to do that?
You don't have to.
Don't have to, okay.
We do that...
Just open it. I've seen it go both ways, so that's why I'm asking the question. So we'll open it up to a public hearing. Anybody want to make any comments? All those people back there, yeah. Okay. Seeing none?
Do you have anything to do with this, with all?
So, when I came in on that other one we're doing, it's next to the, what is it, last month, we talked about the, around by the Volunteer Drive, that park and stuff, that's a large park. That's a large parcel, but I think it has something to do with this too, as far as, you can probably explain that moment, and I can't.
Come on, Dean, this is your moment. I know. Dave Adams is the gentleman we've worked with most closely on the project that, Dean, I really should let you talk about this. Would include much of that property right there.
Does it go out to Main Street here?
It does. The parcel does.
But the project doesn't?
In a sense, it does.
He was talking about mixed use out to the street.
Right. There's, what we've suggested that they do, looks like we're getting do an image here, maybe, is set aside an acre that's adjacent to Main Street for commercial development. So even though that's part of the parcel, it likely wouldn't be developed at the same time as what Dean's worked on.
Identity housing would be held back from the Main Street then?
So anyway, Dean, I do not want to speak for you, but it's my understanding that Dean's working with Dave Adams to maybe be the builder of the townhomes there. So in that respect, yes, you would care about that amendment.
So what I was asking you for you, this is what's falling into that, this zone.
Exactly, yeah. We're talking more with Dave Adams.
The townhouse, the sixplex.
Right now, that would only qualify for four per building.
They have to limit it to four. And they could do the project that way, certainly.
But you're saying the townhomes just behind them are six?
I believe they do. Yes, several of those have six.
I've built some of those down there.
What allowed that to happen? Was it zoned different or something?
You know, that.
Is this 1.6 right now or is this three?
Yeah. It's a very different zone now. So part of what would have to happen before they could do this project is get.
A zone change.
Zoning changed, yeah.
Would it be changed to an R3 with infill overlay zone?
It would be, yeah.
Dual change?
Brad, this project was approved a number of years ago, simply with different zoning provisions that we had in place then.
That's what's happened, is that it was graded. We're trying to find the right zoning to give it into to continue on what's there. This seemed like it was the best, they kind of figured out what they could do.
Well, I'm in favor of bigger properties like this doing it. I just want to be clear that what we're, if we approve this, that we don't put something in a small neighborhood that wouldn't look natural. And is that where that 2.5 acres gives us some protection?
That's the intent. I don't.
If it's not 2.5, then it doesn't even qualify.
Exactly. Yeah, if it's not 2.5, then they can't ask.
So an example, like you said with the Reese School, would that qualify?
I'll check on that. I think they're at two acres, but we can sure look. That's the only property that I've.
But it's in an R1.6 zone, isn't it?
Yeah, so that zoning would have to be changed as well. At least, I think it's zoned R1.6, we can look at that. But also with the infill overlay, like I said at the onset, and it's because it's a zoning mechanism, the city can deny proposals really without a lot of findings and reasoning. You really have a lot of discretion.
Doesn't meet zoning, period.
Well, you know, maybe it's just an aesthetic thing. Maybe you feel like.
It isn't a good fit.
Even though that it qualifies?
It may qualify for somebody to ask, and that's how I'd put it, is, you know, it might meet the fundamental provisions, but you're not obligated to approve zone changes. And that's specifically why we developed it that way, was to make sure that the city still had considerable discretion to see if in the City Council's view, ultimately, they feel like a project's a good fit or not.
Yeah.
It's two acres.
I thought it was about that, so. That zoned R3 too, majority of it?
And it just gives us the opportunity as, on a bigger scale, you know, otherwise you'd be all fourplex and everything would look identical. It allows us to do.
Break it up.
You could have sixes and fives and fours.
Yeah, it just allows it to be more varied. It's just a better, in my opinion, I've been on top of building years. We are to get a better product on bigger pieces like this. Have some flexibility.
I think it's a good idea to have the flexibility in zoning so you can add projects like this, instead of trying to, and still limit them from interspersing with the city where they wouldn't flow very good. But this would create its own luck and wouldn't be interrupting, you know, what the city's got going on in other areas. I do remember last week Brad Gonzalez did have the one concern about the recreational department and their input. And you said you could find some information out on that.
Yeah. In short, the feedback that I got on that relative to the property on Volunteer Drive is that in the past, the Recreation Department has viewed that as kind of a want, you know, that maybe that might be something that they want. They've never been able to feel like it's a need or that it would be a need into the future, though. So from Dale Robinson, the Department Director, simply got word that they don't feel like that's a place that they'd want additional.
Expand into?
There's no other public comment then? We'll close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners if you have any additional questions on these Title 15 amendments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't have a problem with any one of them. Do they need to be voted on separately or just all at once? Is that okay?
You can all at once.
Well, I would move that we go ahead and accept the amendments to Title 15 as they were discussed and outlined this evening.
We're recommending approval to the City Council, is that right?
Exactly.
Yes. Yeah. So we're not going to make that decision here, but that's what my motion would be, to make that recommendation to the City Council.
So we've got a motion by Councilman Wilkinson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by council. Not council, excuse me. What are we? Commission member, there we.
Commissioner.
Ah, yeah, you know. So tells me how many times I watch City Council late at night when I can't sleep. Okay, so a second by Commissioner Tag. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda then is item number four, development standards. Is that Jared or is that Mr. Anderson?
I'll help here at least. Do we have the?
I gotta go find. We do have the proposed changes right here.
Do we have hard copies? Oh, you like it? And Jared, I think these are put together with kind of the additions in red.
Yes. Exactly how we do Title 15.
Material when you can't sleep.
If you really want to fall asleep tonight, this would.
I'm kidding.
Just look for the red, Brad.
Yeah, I'm doing that though.
What you're going to see is in the red, is what we're proposing to change with these standards. It's a lengthy document. I did speak with Bruce, but if you look at this right here, if it's red, if the actual document, the title of the document's red, it's a whole new standard.
Okay. So maybe just to take a quick minute, we talked about our zoning ordinance that regulates land use and what people can do by way of how they use their property. We talked about some different things that pertain to what development should look like. You'll learn pretty quickly flipping through this document that it describes how things are to be constructed. With much of the work that happens when a new building gets built, when a site gets developed or when a subdivision gets constructed, many of the improvements that get installed, I think about water lines, sewer lines, power improvements, different facilities like those, communications equipment, streets, sidewalks, fire hydrants, all of those different kinds of things, all of the things I just mentioned at least, those ultimately end up being owned by the city. Private developers build them, we inspect them as they're being constructed. We inspect them because we inherit them and we get to care for them and, you know, maintain them over time. And particularly because of that component, the fact that they're going to become the city's, the city's responsibility to care for. We're very concerned about making sure that things get built right at the get-go and even before that, that things get designed so that they're going to function well. So that's why this document exists, is to provide, you know, maybe it's an engineer preparing a site plan, architect, different people like that, with a description of how we expect things to be designed and then constructed so that everybody's on the same page, they know what the expectations are, and so that at the end of the day, the city gets improvements that we know we can maintain and care for and that are going to last. So that's the purpose for the document. Jared, I don't know if there's anything specific you want to maybe suggest that they focus on, but.
Like I was just suggesting or discussing, anything in red is the change that we have to the actual standard. This is an older standard, we've changed, you know, three feet. This used to be, I believe, two foot six. If you notice on a new standard, if the title, Low Impact Development, LID Residential Street Inlet Box, this is a whole new standard. So instead of just doing it all in red, it's just one new standard. So the other ones I'd take a good look at are street cross-sections. We've gone back to a 2% slope. It used to be 3%. We fill with our bigger roads. It just, it manages the way the design better. The residential local street stays at 60 feet. We've narrowed the street down to 34 feet from curb face to curb face, or is that?
Back of curb.
Back of curb, yeah.
Two and a half, yeah. And then on our collector streets, we've actually changed most everything. So we do have a 12-foot swell. This is where the LID will be put in place for our storm drain.
Because you've got to take a minute, I think, maybe to talk about what LID is.
This is probably the biggest change that's coming about with this document now. There's always housekeeping that needs to happen. Last night, Chris Thompson, the city engineer, mentioned some things, for example, about us, you know, switching from concrete pipe to using another kind of pipe in certain situations because it.
Exactly.
Exactly, yep. And some different things like that. So those changes will always be part of this update. We're trying to do this on kind of an annual basis, if I understand it right. So January, here we are. But LID, I think that's.
LID is Low Impact Development, and let me.
Jared's baby, isn't he?
Dean probably can. Dean is kind of our expert incident. He's been our guinea pig.
All these standards have been implemented in both his subdivisions, so. Low Impact Development is the approach, it's just like it's read in the definition, now read that, is an approach to land development that works with nature to manage storm water as close to its source as possible. What that means is we like to retain 95% of the water onsite. Instead of collecting the water and sending it to the lakes or the streams, what we're proposing to do with this is to retain the water onsite as much as we can, close to 95%, with an overflow in case of major storm events that the water can go to our regional detention basins and then into the streams. The EPA, over this last year, we became a Phase 2 city, which we have to submit a MS4 permit with the state following some really strict regulations with the state, with the EPA. So one of their suggestions is to do low-impact development. Otherwise, you're going to have to treat your water just the same way we do with our sewer water, which would be very, very expensive. So this is a cheap way that we've actually, like we said, we've done with Dean on his subdivisions. It works really well. It takes all the water. We've watched in these major storms we've had and all the water seems to stay right there and it doesn't overflow at all, so.
So as you've driven around town, you guys know Spanish for as well as I do, you'll see big depressions, man-made depressions that have been constructed strategically throughout the city at different locations. And you might notice that when there's a storm, occasionally those fill up with water. And they fill up with water either, so that water stays there and permeates into the ground, or the water's simply detained there for a period of time and released slowly into our system. But one of the things that conceivably is going to happen with this new approach is that you won't see those as part of proposed developments, at least not to the same extent anymore. The need for those types of areas will be diminished, and this is Jared, and it's because of things like this. Can you just explain, Jared, what the different elements of that are?
This is the planer strip, which I showed you on the cross-section of the street. So this is the sidewalk, curb and gutter. This is the planer strip, it has a little bit of a swell to it. All the water is collected into a storm inlet box in the street. It's chambered into these, what we call R-tanks or storm chambers. These are surrounded with gravel and fabric, and this is where the water is stored and this dissipates back into the ground. So this limits, less piping. We don't have any storm drain piping in the streets. It used to be we'd have major trunk lines, 24-inch trunk lines, 36-inch trunk lines in our streets, collecting this water and sending it to the detention basins that Dave was just talking about. Now we retain it onsite. We have very, very small pipes taking the water to these detention basins because all the water is retained onsite and stored in these chambers. And they can take a lot of water. Let me see if I can find the R-tank.
Jared, if I remember correctly, there's a stack of them in that, in the old electrical there at Canyon Road and 11th East. They look like black crates.
Exactly, they look like mill crates. I've got one upstairs I can bring down when we go into the work session and show you exactly what one is. I'm trying to, I know we have. This is a.
This is a matter of interest. What would the cost difference be between the traditional storm drain setup and implementing this? And you probably would have a.
So a couple of things with that. I think, one, it's because your detention basins are reimbursable, it's going to be a lot less of the cost for the city because you're not, we're not putting in a detention base in which, Mill Road's a good example of this. I mean, the Mill Mill subdivision right there, they've got those things that fill up with water and, you know, kind of out in front of that subdivision and stuff. We'll turn that in for reimbursement and the city's going to pay for that.
Yeah.
I guess it's done over impact fees later on, but, so you're not going to have those.
What about the developer?
I found it sixes and I think it'll be less soon. There's probably one place to get these mill crates right now. I'm sure as all the cities go to them, you're going to get more and more delivered over here. They're coming from China.
Okay.
They've got to be able to produce those things a lot cheaper than we're buying them right now. So I see it coming down.
Okay.
It's probably less, you're not giving up the ground, you know, for the detention basins.
The R-tanks will be done in residential subdivisions. The chambers that I've just showed you will be along our collector streets and it's what the city will maintain. It's easier for us to maintain them chambers in the R-tanks we can. Once the R-tanks are in the ground, it's harder to maintain them and clean them out. But along our major streets, we'll have the chambers, which we can get our jet truck into there and clean.
I will tell you this, there's more of these inlets coming into those R-tanks. So when we go out on these big, some of these big rainstorms we had last fall, we'd go out there and typically you'd have a bigger rainstorm and it would jump over those, because you don't have as many inlets, so it's gaining that much more water. And it would go over the top of those, creates some flooding downs in the basin and Main Street is flooded like crazy. We'd go down to this subdivision and because there's more of them, it never, creates enough water flow to do that. So it was really dry. I was pretty skeptical. I mean, it was like, okay, I'll give it a shot, but I was pretty impressed by it. One change they made that I think was great for homeowners and developer selling is we originally were going to design to have that. originally would have been designed to have that channel along the residential side, too, which would take, I've got a project in Salons doing the same thing, and it makes you put your driveway in this exact spot, you know, and you don't have to do that when you, when we just do it inside those R-tanks, and then let you landscape, what you would match the rest of your landscaping in the park strip. It's a better way that people will care about, you don't have a rock thing here, and then, you know, grass thing right behind it. So, it really, I think, gives still your personal touch on your home, but works great, so.
I noticed in the standards, it requires it to be landscaped with permeable landscaping, so, in other words, somebody can't come in and put a bunch of concrete down, is that my understanding?
Exactly, that's a key.
This is what we're looking to try and do with our standards. I've got some pictures, I put this presentation together.
Yeah.
You see, it's showing these standards, and the ultimate goal is to get something that looks similar to this, with the swells, landscaping, these are some of the ideas, and some other examples from other places in the state and the country. I wish I had some pictures of Mill Road. We, like I said, we've just barely started doing this, and we've got the landscaping, and it turned out really well, so.
That was a little bit different than this standard here, that you're going to be using on your collector roads. Mill Road doesn't have that, the wall, you know, so, these are side yards for homeowners, so what we did there is we went more of the swell, we left it grass, so that the residents would take care of it, rather than having some of the parks jumping in to take care of it. So, a little bit different by work rate, we've got a little rock inlets at those endpoints that...
Something more like the end of, at the end of this, we used to grass.
Yeah, kind of like that, you know, that's a side yard for a home, then...
630 West is another example. We, down along 630 West, and I can, next to the ballpark above the property we were just talking about, with them houses, there's that fence, we went in through there and put some R-tanks in and some LID, and that's just dry landscaping, and it takes every bit of the water, I mean, we only, and it's never, the road's dry. You can go, other parts of Volunteer Drive, and the gutters are just full of water, and all the water's just in the swell. So, we've had some very good success with it.
So, at this point, our job is to take these standards, review them over the month, so that we're prepared. I think, Jared, what we talked about earlier, is if you have any questions about these standards, feel free to email Jared. I guess, email Dave, and Dave can get them to Jared or whatever, and then he can...
I'll get you a card upstairs. You can email me, call me, if you have any questions, just even call me. Corey will be here next time, I will, I'll be out of town on the next planning commission. Corey has a very, a lot better understanding of what he's done, because he's actually put this together, so he'll be able to answer any question, you know.
With that, we don't have any action to make on these standards tonight, and so we'll, we're going to adjourn this portion of the meeting and head to the conference room to have further discussion about the general plan update, and kind of the order of business for the city for a little while, so.